I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 18th, special meeting of the Favre School Committee. I guess it's a little out of order, but Deb would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Dragia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Roderick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizens input, we have one tonight, Patrick Higgins, Robeson Street, Fall River.
Good evening. I saw on your agenda, and Maria Ponce, I want to congratulate you and thank you for the work you did for the city. I hope you have a long, healthy, and happy retirement. Swansea went through the recruitment and search and recruitment procedure for new superintendent earlier this year. On January 8th, the school committee appointed, named and appointed the preliminary search committee, as outlined by the open meeting law, for searches. They did contract with the Mass Association School Committee. When they found out that $10,000 was at the threshold that had to go out to bid, they contacted MAS-C, Mass Association School Committee, and they reduced the price by $5 to get under the $10,000 bid. January 8th, they appointed the screening committee. January 15th, they had their first meeting. January 17th, applications closed. January 18th, they sent all of the members of the preliminary screening committee an email to access all of the applicants and paperwork submitted. The following Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, the screening committee met, went into executive session to review the applications, picked the seven candidates they were going to do the preliminary interviews for in open session. On the February 1st, they came to the Swansea School Committee and announced the names of the three finalists. I'll tell you, Scott Holcomb was one of them because I know he's not available because he's the new, the next superintendent. But there was three candidates. Then they had a meet and greet at the Hoyles School on the day before the snowstorm, which I believe was February 15th or so. And members of the community came and got to meet the three finalists. On February 17th, I believe it was, they had their open session interviews and their open session to interview, and they decided and made an offer of employment to Mr. Scott Holcomb, former superintendent at Attleboro, now principal of Taunton High School, who will be the superintendent July 1st. So I urge you to make a preliminary screening committee, reach out to Sonia Bobozer or Elena, who are the two members of the school committee who was part of the screening committee. And they did an excellent job. They started January 8th, and by February 15th, they had the new superintendent. So it's not a hard lift. It's very well organized. MAS-C did a great job. And I just wanted to give you my experience and my knowledge to help you go through the search committee process to replace Dr. Ponce. And with that, I will sit down, unless anybody has any questions. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up on the agenda, 3.1 is a vote to approve the Favre Public Schools fiscal year 2025 budget draft, operational budget in the amount of $175,770,406, for the purpose of public release in preparation for the public hearing scheduled for Monday, April 8th, 2024. Any discussion? Mr. Dragia?
So we had some hearings, and I believe that they were beneficial to giving some input to the superintendent. So my question is, have there been any changes to this document as it's going to go out to the public?
Thank you. Yes, we did have some good conversations, and but at this time, we are still holding those positions that were on hold because we have a lot of unknowns and we are trying to create a budget that's sustainable. That doesn't mean that those positions are off the table. That means we have to wait until we know for sure what we can afford to add or not add. We don't want to add positions now and then find ourselves in a few months in a position where we're going to have to cut positions. So we are holding those positions until we are more certain as to the direction we're going.
So there was no changes?
No changes.
What does actually get released? The binder or just the budget?
What, please, can you?
What was that?
What are we releasing?
We're releasing the budget.
But what pieces come with it? That's all?
The whole binder gets released.
The binder backup, like?
Yes.
Some of the questions that we asked were clarity. Sometimes it was more about clarity. Something could look a little clearer. I think some things could have been presented in a different fashion. Some conversions weren't conversion, whatever it is. We had some fruitful discussions. So here we are today, three weeks later, and nothing has changed in the document. And that concerns me a little because I think that it wasn't only about the positions that we were putting a hold on. There was other issues that were brought up along the way. So it is what it is. It's going to get released, but there's no way anybody can tell me after all of those questions and all of those discussions that nothing needed to change to make this a better document to go out to the public, in my opinion. Because the same questions might be asked by somebody already. We could have fixed some of those things, but?
We did fix some things that were asked to be fixed, so that the front, the page where we included the grants, we also did the FTEs, added it to the page. So there were some of those things that you're saying that we were asked to clarify that I sent all of you, that we did change.
So in the discussion that we had the last, at the last meeting, which was March, the beginning of March, I asked a question on the sick leave buyback. So sick leave buyback was, is a line item within the budget. That's hence the reason why I asked that question at the last meeting, which makes my point here today relevant to the discussion. So I had asked the superintendent to get some information, and I still haven't received it. The email I sent was on March 6th, it reads, "To Ms. Ponce, Ms. Bronhardt, Dr. Curly, Ms. Obenchain, Attorney Assad," says, "Hello, I have stated for a long time that we do not have proper internal fiscal controls. At Monday's meeting, I said that we are paying people sick leave buyouts when they quit. Attached is the language that clearly does not say we are obligated to pay staff in those two unions when they quit, but we did. Please send me all the money that we have paid out over the last five years under these conditions and error." And I still haven't received anything. The paper that I'm talking about reads the following, "For the public certification for my colleagues and for Ms. Pereira," who doesn't, isn't here, but she questioned whether this was a good situation or tried to question whether I knew what I was talking about. The language reads, "There shall be a severance benefit pertaining to sick leave upon either retirement, termination for other than cause, or death while in the employ of the city payable in accordance with the following schedules." As of 2005, the lesser $55. This basically states that upon retirement, termination for other than cause, or death, we will pay sick leave buyout. Now, I know recently, we paid out under this language, a person that worked in a maintenance contract, and I brought this up six, eight months ago, and I keep on being told, "No, we, we're paying them because we have to." Now, I implore anybody to tell me where it says in this document I just read, that it says, "If you quit, you get a sick leave buyout." Anybody? And on March 6th, I asked the question to say, "All I'm asking you for is how much did we pay out?" By my indications, that's 12 days away, and I still haven't received anything. Part of the reason why I get frustrated is because that's a legitimate question, and all I asked for was a legitimate answer. But as it goes around here, you don't get any answer. I also had a conversation with the superintendent directly last week stating this exact thing, and I still received no answer. In that conversation, I actually said, "If I don't get any answer, I'm going to be forced to have to read this in public," which I did not want to do. And I still haven't received an answer. Can anybody tell me how much we've paid out in the last five years of this sick benefit to people under the maintenance or custodial contract?
I cannot. I'd, I'd have to look it up.
Were you asked to look that up before, or is this the first time you're hearing this?
No, I, I'm aware of the situation, I'm aware of the request. I just have not had a chance to look it up.
Right, I asked Attorney Assad to weigh in on that. Looking at that language you sent me, those three paragraphs, and also we talked about who had gotten paid for sick leave buyback. It's not that it wasn't, we're getting that information.
But it's 12 days. Does it take that long to get an answer? I've said the same thing for six months. I've said over and over and over again that those contracts are not being followed. But it goes nowhere because we just keep waiting and keep waiting and keep waiting. And meanwhile, we're paying out, we're paying out, we're paying out. The quote last month was, "We are not only on good contracts," as Ms. Pereira mentioned, "we're doing super negotiations to contracts because we're paying out when we don't even have to pay out." And I don't even know how much, but it's definitely thousands of dollars that we've paid out for no reason. Now, you can say all you want, that's a small thing. If we don't take care of these things, we're going to have a big mess on our hands with contracts not being followed. And that's what I see here, is that we look at the stuff in the budget, let's just pass it through, let's not talk about it. Let's not respond to questions that people ask. That's not a good way to, to lead, that's not a good way to get people on, you know, be on the same page, and it's entirely, totally frustrating to me. When we look at this budget that we're going to release, there's line items in there that that definitely should have changed. We're going to now wait and see. So everything we're putting here is what we know at the time? There's definitely things that should have been changed in this document. I'm a little disheartened in it, but it is what it is. We should have gotten an answer, I should have personally gotten an answer on it, and it's, it's a pretty sad state of affairs when I have to raise this in public to try to get somebody to respond. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Ms. Roderick?
Can, I just want to clarify for folks that this is a draft, so this is still a working document, and more changes can be made. And then it looks like our, oh, sorry, I'm not good with the mic, sorry. But our, it's still a draft, that changes can still be made. And so if we see that there are changes, and I'm saying this more for the public, not for people on the stage, but again, it's a draft, it's a working document, and so hopefully, you know, with some additional pieces, it becomes clear to everybody what's in the budget, where the money's going, where it's coming from, you know, all of the things that are really important to everybody. And then come April, we'll make the final decision on it. So it's really just a comment clarifying for folks.
Thank, thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
I got a motion in a second? Discussion? None further. Deb, please call the roll on releasing.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 3.2 is a vote to approve the Favre Public Schools fiscal year 2025 draft of transportation budget in the amount of $10,897,280, for the purpose of public release and preparation for the public hearing scheduled for Monday, April 8th, 2024. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dragia?
Madam Superintendent, are you prepared to state that we will not be going over the $10,897,000?
I can't guarantee that. Obviously, you know that that's a moving target, so that, that's what we're projecting. I, I don't think any of us can say that.
But is it based on what? Like, what is it based on?
Based on our current. Mr. Almeida can answer that?
I ask because I think that's where you would get certainty, I guess.
So just to, just to clarify, so the budget, the projected transportation figure is $13.8 million, as discussed during our budget deliberations. A million, 402,720 is coming from Circuit Breaker for out-of-district transportation. A million dollars is coming from ESR. 500,000 is coming from the McKinney-Vento account. So the net figure to come out of the operating budget is $10,897,280.
So adding all those together, can you take us through the process of where that number came up from? So obviously, we have contracts, so we know if we have the same number of routes, we, you can kind of figure out what the, the dollar figure is. But where, is there any other backstory to deliberations to say, "We've crunched these numbers, we know the routes are all working, we're on track this year"? Is there any other thing that you can say to make anybody feel confident that, other than the fact that it's based on what we spent last year?
So it's based on what we're projected to spend this year with a slight increase? That's what it's, that's what it's based on.
And there's no hidden, like, concerns? There's no routes that are up?
As, as far as concerns go, you know, McKinney-Vento's a problem because McKinney-Vento's increased over the last several years, and we know the funding comes in afterwards. You know, in any, who knows what's going to happen, if there are any potential additional routes that are going to come up that we're not aware of at this time. But as far as, you know, this is the best I could do at this time for this figure.
And the McKinney-Vento is the city, the money goes to the city?
Correct.
And there's only 500,000 in there?
No, there's more than that. There's more than that. So the reimbursement for last year was just about a million dollars. I do project that the reimbursement would be around a million dollars. This, this 500,000 is what we spent this year out of there, so I use the same figure going forward.
Right, so theoretically, if there's a million dollars reimbursed last year from McKinney-Vento, and we took that whole reimbursement this year, we could reduce our number by 500,000?
Yep, yes.
And what's the rationale for that not happening? If the money is for McKinney-Vento?
I was just trying to keep it sustainable for, I was just trying to keep it sustainable. So using the same figure, we're moving forward. If the city decides to spend more money in that line item, then this number will change slightly.
If the city decides to spend, how can the city spend money without the school committee? I know it's convoluted because it's on the side.
It's correct, but no, that's something that we'd bring forward to the school committee, and they would know ahead of time. But at this time, this is the number that we're using.
And how much is in that account? I know you said, is this, does that carry over from year to year?
It does. It's a, it's like, it's a revolving fund essentially, is what it is.
Right, so I feel like the, a good number would be the reimbursement in the prior year.
Yep.
So if the reimbursement is a million dollars, then that million dollars should go to offset the cost of transportation in the following year.
Yep, I don't disagree.
I think that's kind of a fair way to do it, but we arbitrarily have 500,000 in here. Can you help me out with it, Madam Superintendent? Did you authorize to only use half of the reimbursement, or is that, where did the 500,000 come from, Madam Superintendent?
We've, we've used 500,000 the last several years as the amount, Mr. Dragia. That's the amount that's been the placeholder that we've used.
No, I understand. Madam Superintendent, may you respond to whether, if we got a million dollars last year in the reimbursement, have you been part of any discussions relative to what the amount is for that?
Yes, we actually, we meet and have those discussions. We're trying to be conservative, thank you for the word, conservative, and trying to project on that and use that number and then work from there. That's the history of what we have done. I mean, Mr. Almeida and I go over the numbers and go over the budgets multiple times. We've had meetings, me, him, and our team, so yes.
And meetings with the city also, Mr. Dragia, we met last week. I, I think you'll see a, you know, again, as, as Sarah so eloquently put it, this is a draft. I think you'll see some changes there. We actually talked about it last week in a meeting, but we wanted to make sure we had our draft budget out. There's a couple of other things that you suggested that you were concerned about, and obviously, that was one of them, but we wanted to see if that number changed a little more going down the road, but it had been discussed both with the chief finance officer, myself, and the schools had another one of our meetings last week, we talked specifically about McKinney-Vento.
Right, so my concern is having, sitting here with my other colleagues on the school committee, our responsibility is for the schools. We were never told that this number, when we got the million dollars that is optional that you mentioned last time, Mr. Almeida, we were never told that the city's sitting on half a million in McKinney-Vento funds that is not going to be used, so therefore, we need to give them the million. The way I see it is that 500,000 that we're giving out of either our ESR funds or the Circuit Breaker, which you said was voluntary, we're given more than what we have to give, but we're not being brought, the decision to us to say, "Members of the school committee, would you like to give another half a million dollars to transportation, even though it's going to come out of half a million dollars and something for the schools and the kids"? We've never been presented that discussion, and I think that's a problem because you all can have a discussion with the city, the city's responsible for the transportation, I get all that, but in the difference between the 10.8 and the 13 is discretionary money that you all use your discretion to say, "Yes, we're going to give this to the city or for transportation," but this school committee never got a chance to vote and say whether we wanted to or not. We're just going to try to get this thing passed through, so yep, they got us again for another million. And I think we should have a vote before these things are happening, but nobody told us. So I don't think we should be voting on the 10.8. I think we should be maximizing the number and reduce the 500,000 off of, what were you saying, was that, Mr. Almeida? Would that be the line if we were going to cut 500,000 to support schools?
Yes.
Would be to reduce it from the ESR?
Yes.
To me, that makes the most sense because that's giving $500,000 to the schools where they already have the money in an account on the city side. To me, that makes a lot of sense, so I'll make a motion that we reduce it by 500,000 and from the ESR funds. The end result will still be the same here, but we will be saving $500,000 in ESR funds that the schools could use for the kids. I yield.
I would, I would like to address that. I think that as, as everybody in the audience knows, the entire increase that we get this year from raising our taxes by Prop 2 and 1/2 goes directly to the schools. We don't get one penny for police fire or anything because of the increases we are obligated under the Student Opportunity Act. If, if sharing the money, as Mr. Dragia says, with the city is a negative experience, then he should vote no. And I'm, I'm going to vote yes. This is money that goes a long way to transport kids. The city does fulfill its obligations at the next school, I'm sorry, at the next city council meeting, we're sending down another transfer of 1.1 million, so we meet our 100% as obligated, and we're trying to do that again for next year. So I don't think that this is anything that bad, having the schools pitch in more for transportation. I'm respectfully asking that we, we leave the budget as is if there are adjustments coming. As we told the schools, we can work on them. This is a draft, and we'll fix things going forward, but at this time, I would not suggest that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dragia?
I made the motion based on the facts of what we have. So we have a million dollars in school funds that we're going to give to the city. Last meeting, we talked about that being a structural deficit going forward for the city. All I simply did was make a motion to ask that we remove 500,000 from the ESR in this number. That's all. I didn't ask, so at that point, at that point, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect?
I didn't hear a second, and I said, I made my piece.
With all due respect, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, when somebody makes a motion, the next comment isn't to try to change the vote or whatever you want to do, the next comment is, "Mr. Dragia made a motion. Is there a second?" And then we give a person the opportunity to do that. If my colleagues don't want to second it, and they want to give $500,000 of school money away to the city, that's the vote, but please ask for a second.
I'll ask for a second.
I, I'll second the motion because I think that everybody has a, has an opportunity, and everyone should have an opportunity to weigh in on whether or not they want to do that.
Fine, I, I made my piece. I'm not going to change what I said. I think it's fair. Anything further on this one? Deb, call the roll?
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Excuse me, can, what are we voting on?
The, the ESR money to reduce it by 500,000.
I'm having difficulty, I'll be honest with you, I'm having difficulty hearing that side of the room, so the clarification, I'm voting on something I'm not quite, so if I can just, for clarification?
Deb, you want to read the motion?
I can clarify.
No, look, Deb.
Closer to the mic.
I can clarify, Ms. Pereira, if you'd like.
Hold on, I didn't recognize you. Go ahead, Deb, say what motion we're voting on, please.
It was to reduce the transportation budget by 500 in the ESR funds.
So you're saying, but what I was hearing, if I'm allowed to say this, what I was hearing, Kimi Aguiar was saying that? He's saying, use it from the ESR, don't use it from the ESR funds, take it from an account that we already have. So the school is not getting less money, the transportation is still getting paid for. We're just taking it from our transfer reimbursements as opposed to ESR funds. Is that what I'm getting?
May I respond?
Go ahead, Mr. Dragia.
So the, the question is, and you're pretty much right on, Ms. Pereira. So right now, in order for us to pay for transportation, Mr. Almeida has worked with the superintendent to come up with $13 million total, thereabouts. In that amount, we have a fund that the city gets on the city side, like a bank account, that has, was reimbursed last year for $1 million total. So they have a million dollars plus sitting in an account for transportation.
For transportation.
For transportation, on the city side. We are saying voluntarily, we're going to give as a gift, basically, to the city a million dollars to pay for, to help pay for transportation. And out of that million-dollar bank account where they have for transportation, we're only going to use 500. What I'm saying is, use the reimbursement for what it has to be and take the ESR funds that Mr. Almeida has identified and reduce that by 500,000. Therefore, he has to come back to this school committee and say, "Now we have an additional $500,000 to spend on programming for the kids in the schools." So they have an account there with the million dollars in it, they're only going to use half a million, but we're going to end up paying an extra half a million. Next year, it's going to be a structural deficit on the city side because ESR funds are gone, and we don't have that money. So all I'm asking for is that, once, I was told that we got reimbursed last year for McKinney-Vento transportation, a million dollars? Common sense is, you'd put that first million dollars towards transportation. That's all I'm asking, not for more, just what you got reimbursed from the state. If that was only 500,000, it makes sense to me. But we get a million-dollar reimbursement, we're going to pay 500,000 out of the money that we could be using to do projects for kids. Hope that explains it.
Okay.
I have a question. Which motion are we voting on right now?
We're voting on that motion that Mr. Dragia just described.
Okay.
Where are we, Deb?
It was Mr. Corey. It was his vote.
I had?
Your vote?
Oh, no.
No.
Ms. Larrabee?
No.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
No. Next item up on the agenda, discussion and, and vote to approve the submission of the Student Opportunity Act to the Department of Education.
Mr. Chairman?
And the secondary, and secondary education is presented by Dr. Tracy Curly, Assistant Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
Mr. Dragia?
We voted on, my, my motion was?
You are right, the rest of it.
So now we got to vote on the real motion?
To reduce the, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Dragia, to reduce the transportation budget of 10 million, to release it by, from 10-897 to 10-397-280.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think it stays the same, Mr. Almeida can correct me.
Correct, the amount stays the same.
The amount's the same, it's that other piece that's on the backend.
Oh, the ESR piece?
The ESR piece is the only thing, so we just need to at least vote for, I think, this motion as it reads. Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Go ahead, Deb.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. Then we'll go back. Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. 10.3 is, I mean, 3.3 is discussion and vote to approve the submission of the Student Opportunity Act to the Department of Education and Secondary Education is presented by Dr. Tracy Curly, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening. So all of you received a draft of our three-year SOA plan, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about SOA planning here in the district. I think for the most part, people understand the Student Opportunity Act as legislation that was aimed at ensuring that every student in the Commonwealth has access to high-quality public education. And, you know, the tag there is regardless of the ZIP code. And it's meant changes to Chapter 70 funding. I think that's what people recognize, you know, think about most when they think about the Student Opportunity Act. But it also includes some policy updates, and it sets forth an expectation that every district is to focus on addressing disparities in the learning experience and outcomes of students that are the least well-served. And then also on the policy side is a requirement that every district in the Commonwealth creates and presents a three-year plan. So this is our second plan. The other piece of the Act says that, once we have a three-year plan in place, we do annual progress reports. So we have a three-year plan being presented in 2024. We'll do progress reports in '25 and '26, and then we will come back and present a new or updated plan in 2027. What the committee is asked to approve tonight is the second of our plans. And the plan itself has been developed within a process and using a template that was provided by the Department of Education. And so we're charged with summarizing our plan, which you see there. We have to analyze our data. The state actually gives us some dashboards, heat maps for the district, which show the areas of the greatest disparity for specific student groups. We're asked to create ambitious targets. Some of those are prescribed by the Department of Ed, others you see outlined in our plan. We are asked to engage our stakeholders and then select evidence-based programs. So the plan itself, the template itself, requires that we select one to three focus areas. We have actually selected three. And then within each of those focus areas, we are asked to select one to three evidence-based programs. Fall River is one of 17 districts that will also have to do an addendum, which is a longer-form budget, which shows spending across all of the focus areas and all of the evidence-based programs. So I think everyone had a chance to review, but our plan highlights four student groups for our focused work. Our focused work will be around students with disabilities, English learners, low-income students, and our Hispanic-Latino students. So we saw the greatest disparities for our English learners and students with disabilities in terms of student achievement. And then we looked at other indicators, and specifically chronic absenteeism. We saw great disparities for our students with disabilities, low income, and our Hispanic-Latino students. So we, our three focus areas that you would have seen are promoting students' physical and mental health and wellness in welcoming and affirming and safe spaces, selecting and skillfully implementing high-quality and engaging instructional materials, and supporting culturally and linguistic sustained practices that foster deeper learning, and then also using the MTSS process to implement academic supports and interventions that provide all students, and particularly students with disabilities and multilingual learners, equitable access to deeper learning. So within the focus areas, we identified five different evidence-based programs by which we will engage in our work. These includes positive school environments, inclusive curriculum adoption processes, supporting curriculum implementation, effective use of the WITA framework, and high-level practices for students with disabilities. Across the board, we're committing to deepening the work that's already underway. I would say that if you took a look at our draft plan, there isn't anything in there that would look out of the ordinary. It's very much aligned with our budget priorities and in a lot of, you know, what you heard people talk about as part of our budget process for the coming year. We've invested a lot of time and resources in, you know, in our people and in our materials, and our plan is to stay the course in service of our students.
Any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
I'm very pleased to hear this outlook as far as Student Opportunity Act monies are concerned. I already noticed in the draft here, it says to support an online technical platform to try to engage more parents. That really grabbed my attention big time, and I think that's a very positive step forward. I would not be averse to possibly looking at within, if we have any strong people with technical capability, to help devise that online platform so that we could engage that idea as quickly as possible. Getting more parents engaged, especially in that low-strata bracket, would be, I think, critical for achievement in the classroom and relationships with the teachers. I think it's so critically important moving forward. Our numbers are stark. They're very real, and there's a real challenge presented to our schoolteachers every day in the classroom and our staff. So I'm very pleased to hear about the Student Opportunity proposals. And I think at the last meeting, I think we voted to approve the Cartwheel partnership, which I thought was an excellent proposal as far as an evidence-based program is concerned. I know that from a clinical point of view, our counselors and our SEL liaisons could certainly use this type of critical backup, trying to keep the kids' behavior within regulation, which is such a key challenge in so many of our schools, not only here. When I say our schools, I mean all our schools, throughout the Commonwealth, throughout the country, actually, with what's going on right now. So one more question. When you presented the idea of an addendum to the budget for the cost of the SOA, is that what you meant?
Yes. So there are 17 districts in the Commonwealth, those who meet certain thresholds for the amount of increase, increases and the amount of money we receive as part of our budgets. And we have to do a longer-form budget, like budget workbook for them. So when they, for the plan itself, we have to put narrative in text to picking out one to three of the programs, and then for each program, one to three evidence-based programs associated. But for the long-form addendum that we have to submit, it's a budget workbook, and we have to put dollar amounts and associate them with each one of the focus areas, each one of the evidence-based programs.
I want to thank you and your team for, this is a real serious draft proposal here. There's a lot of information in here. I want to thank you for putting that together, along with your team and Assistant Superintendent Bronhardt for bringing in Cartwheel. I think that's going to be a real help to our people. Thank you very much. I yield.
Anything further? Ms. Roderick?
Do we have a comparison to the one that was done three years ago? Because it says that this is a three-year plan draft, so I'm assuming one was done three years ago?
We did. We enacted a plan that we had to submit in, I think it was January of '21. The timeline ended up being a little bit off because of COVID. And so the timelines were off. So I think the last one we did was submitted in January of '21. And then, but we might have actually, it was voted on a little differently. This time, they were very specific with schools to get them in front of, districts to get them in front of a school committee prior to submitting to the state.
Okay. I was just, because I wasn't here at that time. So there are things that, as I'm reading through this, like I don't know what the comparison was to three years ago, and I would love to see that. So if we could, again, I don't expect you to have that right now, but if we could get that, that would be fantastic. I was just looking at some of these numbers, and I thought they were higher. I could be wrong. But I thought our specialized population, our students with disabilities, was actually higher than 25%. I thought we were hovering closer to 30.
So we, because of the, there are changes. We go through this each year with the, even with our budget, and when we put together budget cover sheets and things like that, always a question of whether or not we're using real-time or the official numbers that the state has, because our October 1 enrollment is what actually determines our funding for the following year. And so I believe that what you're seeing here is probably October 1 numbers.
Okay. So that clarified, that's helpful. Again, I haven't seen one of these. I just have questions. And then these pieces on the third page around engaging families. So integrated family engagement and professional learning, the collaborative family engagement plan, the family academy advisory, the home visit initiative, quarterly leadership meetings. Are there other areas where there's more information in regards to those things? Because when I'm reading that, I'm reading it as a, like a specific task force, right? The collaborative family engagement plan. So I'm thinking of that as like a written document that has a plan with, you know, data that we collect and things like that. So again, not asking for that information right now. But when I read this, it looks to me like this is an actual written plan that I haven't seen.
Right. So in this particular section, it is actually our narrative of, around things we already have going on at the district level, like, you know, through our parent and community engagement center. So these are things that are up and running, and they are, they do exist. And so if they're not readily available, I think that we would want to make them, to make sure that people know about them.
Okay. Again, it may seem tedious that I'm asking these questions, but I haven't seen one of these until we just received it. And so I want to make sure that I understand what I'm looking at. The same thing with like integrating family engagement and professional learning, like what does that look like? A family academy advisory group. I know that the family academy and that workshop series has been pretty successful, which is awesome. But this is the first that I've seen about an advisory group. So those are just pieces that I'm looking for more information about. Again, not right now, because I don't expect you to have that at your fingertips, but moving forward. And then this is the first I'm seeing of a family WhatsApp group, too.
I am going to be honest with you and say that I received this information, and I didn't know that it was being used. But it was identified by our parent and community engagement folks that that is a strategy that they're using right now.
All right. So again, that's another one, like could we get more information about that?
Sure.
I think that was all I had. It's really, I'm looking for more information, just because I haven't seen one before, and I'm looking for that comparison and just looking for more detailed info, especially on the family engagement piece, because we know that, you know, that's a huge, huge need in our area. So for now, I yield that I reserve the right to ask more questions.
Anything further? Mr. Aguirre?
So I'd like to see also the three-year plan, to see what it looked like before and whether we met or didn't meet some of the things. I think that would be helpful when we sort of look at this. But also, as you mentioned, we're basing the budget based on some of these things. Now, when I can just, I can read, I know what it says here. I don't have to like what I'm reading, per se, and like the parts about analyzing data and our scores and stuff. We all, I think, understand that they're flatter than flat, or, you know, whatever wording you want to use. But when I read in the second paragraph down, it says, the last line says, "ELA and math data indicate an overall achievement slide has subsided in that we are recovering towards 2019 levels in some areas." I think that is, I've said this before when we went over the data, that's not something to aspire to, to be back. We're getting closer to where we were when we were way behind before COVID. Isn't, it doesn't really make me feel like we're on track to get where we need to get to. And I think I've said that before. It's not a secret. The second page, it's the same thing. Reviewing the data, conclusion shows that all students in comparison to schools across the district and the state, performance gaps at the elementary are wide across all content areas. Doesn't make me feel good about where we're at. Compared to the performance groups within our district, disparities are concerning for our English learners and students with disabilities, low-income, Hispanic, and multireg, another major concern. And as I'm reading these things, I'm trying to figure out, by approving this, are we saying that we're going to make strides? Like, what are the goals? And this, I don't think that's the point of this, per se, but it has to match up with something to say.
Sure.
When are we going to get to where we should be?
Right. So what, over the next three years, what we're expected to do annually is, we identified some benchmarking that we would use in each of our, for each one of the focus areas, each one of the evidence-based programs. And then in addition to that, we are responsible to the targets that are set by the Department of Ed, specific ones, in terms of subgroups, lowest performing 25%. And we have to agree as part of putting forth this plan and taking the money and moving forward with these plans, that we are going to be held accountable to those specific measures. So this is very focused on particular student groups. The state and the support that we get from them is very focused on specific student groups, and that's the data to which we're being held accountable on an annual basis.
I get that. So my concern is, though, if we looked back at the one three years ago, I bet you there was similar language in there related to this. So we, three years ago, we created the plan. We said we were going to look at the benchmarks, we were going to look at the targets, we were going to look at the, all of those things, for the most part, didn't come to fruition. And this plan probably looks very similar to the other plan, in that it said in three years, we're going to look at stuff to see where we're going to go with our data. And our data, every year, it goes, three years go by, we, our data doesn't get any better, our assessment, our achievement doesn't get any better, but we go with another three-year plan that looks very similar to the one before. That's sort of where my concern is with this plan.
This plan actually doesn't look like the old one, because this is very specific from DESI as a result. Remember, we had a pandemic in there, too, which impacted the old plan and the data. When, I agree with you. I think everybody, we've said this many times, we're not where we need to be. But we also, part of that, when you say we're not, we shouldn't be aspiring to get to prior to, to 2019, you're right, that we need to have high expectations. But what we're saying is that that's the most normal year we had prior to the pandemic. And we need to at least, that's part of recovery. That's what districts are, we were all tiered, and that's what, we all need to get back there and then some. You're right. But we also, let's not forget that we had this pandemic that kind of threw everybody off course. And for us, it throws us off course even more because we struggled even before the pandemic. You're right. But that doesn't mean that, this is not exactly the way the old one was. This is very prescriptive. It was that when we created the SOA plans at first, now there's been time that people have looked at it, they've watched them go into, you know, being implemented, and now the state is saying, okay, so let's be very specific as to who we're targeting, how we're spending that money. Because the whole point of changing the formula is recognizing that our students with disabilities, our students who with multilingual students, our students of poverty require more, and we need to make sure that we are putting those resources to those students.
Yeah, I agree that, you know, we have to put more resources, and I get that. But if the sections, I don't have it to look at, so I can't compare. I'm just going off my head now. Section 3 says, "Set ambitious three-year targets for improvement in student achievement." Was there no heading in the last report, section 3, that said, "Set ambitious three-year targets for improvement in student achievement"? Is that a new heading?
I don't, I don't know if the template changed, the spirit of it didn't. This specific language around confirming that the district will use our three-year targets for increasing performance for lowest performing, I don't know if that specific language was something that we had to sign off on. We do, as a matter of accountability, we are held accountable to those numbers, but I don't remember if it was embedded. I would say that for us as a district, the biggest, the biggest difference in, I would say, in our experience in terms of drafting the plan and in where we landed, is really around the student groups. I think that even though the spirit of the Student Opportunity Act from its inception was focused on student groups and kind of leveling that playing field and making sure the greatest disparities got the greatest amount of attention, as a district, we didn't do that. And I think we rested on the fact that we were, you know, we're a low-performing district. We're always focused on, you know, how, you know, how bad things look overall. And we had this built in, like, oh, we can't focus on student groups, we can't really look at students with disabilities and give more, you know, resources and time and energy because across the board, we're not doing well. And that's been a big shift for us over the last couple of years, where we've said, no, yeah, there are disparities, there are differences between us and the state, but within this district, we have very large gaps for our students with disabilities and for our English learners and some of other student groups. And this, the difference for me in this three-year plan is that we're focusing. It's not, I want to say we had eight or nine areas of focus in the last plan. There was maybe a list of 20, and we pretty much started by saying, we're going to do it all. And I think that we've really doubled down on the areas that matter, and we have a much tighter plan. So for me, that's the big difference.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think that focusing is important. I just look at it, we're approving this plan, and then we're probably never going to see it again. Is that something that I don't really want to have happen?
I completely disagree, because I think over the last couple of years, we've been very focused with our instructional priorities. It's driven work in the district from the district level into schools, into weekly PLCs at schools. I think that, I do think that it's different.
I wasn't referring to you, Dr. Curly.
No, I don't know.
I was referring to us, like that we.
No, but I think it's, but see, to me, I think it's important. We have to report out on this specific plan, not, you know, MCAS overall. We have to report out annually. And that is a little bit different. That piece is different. I do remember writing a progress, we did an amendment one year, we did a progress report another year. The state is saying, "You're doing these progress reports every year." We meet regularly with people, a team from the state that comes in to review data with us. So I do think, I do think it's more focused, and I do think that, you know, this will drive our work for three years.
Yeah, I, when you talk about the need for improvements to those areas like special education and ELL, if I take everything that you said, everything that we've been talking about, and look back and determine, did we actually do what we needed to do relative to the budget in all of those areas? I would say no. Because I think when I was going over the budget, and I kept asking, "Do we do a zero-based budget? Do we not?", like, so, based on everything that you said, which I tend to agree with, that we were looking more at the big picture and not the specifics, during the budget, we didn't look like that. We looked at what everybody already had, so then they just keep what they have, and we'll maybe grab a little more from here, we'll call it a conversion. If these were the true focus areas, we would say, start from zero, and we have to do whatever we have to do for the special education, for the ELL. We had the lady from ELL up here that said she couldn't find enough people to work, and then it was like, "I'm not going to add the positions, because we're not going to be able to fill them," and this and that. Well, that flies in the face of this being the priority in the SOA plan, that we didn't even put positions in the budget, because we said we couldn't fill them, and therefore, we just let it go. So I tend to agree, wholeheartedly, what you're saying, of focusing on those groups. I would just want you to sit with your team and go backwards and say, "Did we truly do that?" Because I think we left status quo, and we scattered around a little, a couple of things. That's my only concern. And you know as well as I do that our achievement is not where it needs to be. Superintendent just acknowledged that. When we look at page eight, it says, "Increase high-quality instructional material implementation, increase SGP on math and ELA, MCAS." That's a tall order. We haven't improved on that, I don't believe, in years. I might be wrong, but I don't think we have. That's a tall order that I bet you was probably something in the last one. So when we get it, we might have more questions. I appreciate the work on it, I just think it's step one, we have a lot more work to do to get to where we need to. With that, I yield.
Anything further?
No, I was just going to say motion to approve.
Anything further?
I just, I just have one other question. Section five, selecting evidence-based programs, right? So 1.1A, which EVPs are we going to implement? So it says here that we're going to utilize a system for integrating services and aligning initiatives that promote students' behavioral and mental health and wellness. And then there's a ton of stuff about social-emotional learning, which you don't have to convince me.
I can't hear you.
And I'm Portuguese, too. You don't have to convince me to focus on social-emotional learning. But what I am wondering about is that specifically, it's written in here about inclusion of students with disabilities, and I don't see anything targeted towards inclusive practices. Like, how do we get those kids, you know, out of our substantially separate rooms and integrated more in our activities and in with other youth? So I'm just wondering, how can any of these?
I think it just might be, there might be some language related to that in another section.
Yeah, there's a piece about inclusion, inclusive academic practices. But when I'm reading social, emotional, you know, mental and physical well-being in welcoming-affirming spaces, I'm looking at something more than just the academic piece.
Okay, I think that makes sense. And I'll say that we do have a responsibility in each narrative piece to identify, you know, we identify specific student groups. I think it makes sense that we are, that we will include pieces of that in the narrative. I don't know how that looks and sounds for you guys when we're asking you to approve it tonight, but I do think that it's worth it for us to return with your permission, as part of the vote, to revisit that, and that we commit to, with specific language, in, within that evidence-based program. I think that makes, I think that makes sense.
The other piece, and this could just be like my lack of understanding. So 2.1, inclusive curriculum adoption process, right? So Year Four of K-5 Wonders, Elementary and Illustrated in Math, that, all of these things are across the district, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but underneath, it says, "Which schools will be impacted by these efforts?" We only have Durfee, RPA, and Stone.
And so that is, that is specific to a new, a new piece, because the new piece of this was for high school ELA curriculum. That's the next thing that we anticipate will happen in the next three years. And so those were the schools that were going to be impacted by the new, the new elements. I will actually have to check with somebody, because it might be that it should have said all schools, even though the new piece was just for.
Okay, yeah, I get what you're saying, just the way that, and again, could be just the way that I'm interpreting. The first part talks about all of these pieces that we're using district-wide. And then the, I guess, third paragraph talks about a specific high school ELA curriculum, right? So I see that as separate, but there's also that first part, so that's what just stood out to me, that's all. And then there was one other piece that I, okay. So, "Use the MTSS process," so page eight, 2.2, right? So "Use the MTSS process to implement academic supports and interventions that provide all students, particularly students with disabilities and multilingual learners, equitable access to deeper learning." But then, in the narrative, it just talks about multi-language learners?
So I think that is because within that area of focus for 2.2, there are two parts, 2.2A and 2.2B.
All right, I missed that part. Okay, you broke it out. I looked, I looked at it and thought it was a separate goal, but I got that. Okay, I yield.
Mr. Corey?
I'll be brief. I know since my term on the school board began in around 2018 or so, I've seen a real growth in our SEL services to all schools. And I know that it's an evolutionary process. And I know that the SOA proposal from the state level was conjured up as a result of the Gateway Cities really struggling with so many similar numbers. So I don't want anything to get lost in, especially our local state delegation that helped us to ascertain these funds over a real long amount of time that we had to lobby for them, and that these funds are so welcome. And I see that this process, I like that there's a three-year, you know, review on this, to see where we're at in three years. We're going to have to answer to the state at some point how the overall progress of the SOA plays out. But having the SOA in place is creating this entire conversation of expanding all of these services, and especially for our students with disabilities, and I'm very proud of. I'm very proud that we have this money to work with. It's really going to help us a lot. Again, I want to thank your team, and I know that you'll always be coming to us with, you know, whatever numbers you can, so that we can always look at this and say yes and no to those proposals. But really, overall, I think that's an evolutionary process, and that we're at the first phases of it. I'm really happy that we're talking about social-emotional learning and social-emotional growth, because ultimately, I think that's going to help with our achievement in the classroom to help our school teachers get through. Thank you, with that, I yield.
Anything further? Do I have a motion a second, Deb?
You do not.
I do not, can I get it?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion a second, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. 3.4 is "Discussion and vote to retain the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to assist the school committee with respect to the superintendent's search."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Hold on, there was a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we just explain for folks what that looks like?
Briefly, they go through.
Yeah, you don't have to give a disretention, just like, short version for folks.
They, they do a lot of the necessary steps to make sure that the next superintendent has the right experience, credentials, is properly vetted, and they help to check the references, which is also another key piece. And then they present the finalists to us, and we obviously will do our own series of interviews. And going forward, we will make our selection.
Bobby's got a question.
Are you done?
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I was just, I was just saying, after Mr. Higgins spoke at it, just to clarify, it's similar to the process that someone said went through, right?
Swante.
In timeline, and, okay.
Similar. Mr. Aguirre?
Just a couple of things. One is, how much money is it going to cost?
Well, again, one of the things that was pointed out, it was, if we go over, I mean, we could always put an amendment on that says, "In compliance with all procurement regulations in Massachusetts, so we don't do anything, you know, to get ourselves in trouble." I believe it's a sole-source item, but if it's not, we'll have to be under the $10,000 amount to comply with the law.
So one of the things I think, and I agree with what the mayor said at the last meeting. The mayor said at the last meeting, "We need to get a search, work with the MASC to get a search for the best candidate without politics." That's what the mayor said at the last meeting, and I couldn't agree with him more. We do need this process to find the best person, the best qualified person to come in and lead our district, with the tremendous amount of challenges that we have. Superintendent is leaving on June 30th. I feel like we should be making this a process as quick as possible, so that we can not just rush the thing through, but get the candidates, get them in, screen them with the MASC, and get them back before this committee as soon as possible, because time is of the essence, in my opinion. My personal opinion is, we need to look at some of the qualifications and what we're looking for. I don't know how that process will go. This is the first I'm seeing of this particular piece, but I want to weigh in publicly that I believe we need an outside superintendent with experience, somebody that has experience as a prior superintendent, somebody that can come in and lead a district with a lot of challenges, and work with strategic planning and the like. So I think, I don't know when, when I look at the, number one, like, when do we weigh in on those pieces? Is that an individual thing by the MASC, or is that to be determined, Mr. Mayor?
Well, the process is kind of laid out right there for you, Mr. Aguirre. I do think that we, you know, know where you stand on bringing in someone from the outside. I believe another committee, person already mentioned that, but in my mind, we want the best person to lead the city of Fall River. And that's what I'm looking for. I really don't, I'm not closing my eyes to anybody. I'm not saying they have to be internal, I'm not saying they have to be external. But I know what we're going to do is hire the best person for the city of Fall River, and this process will help us.
Yeah, so I'll stand by my comment, that we need a superintendent that has experience, prior experience. We had a mess with Dr. Malone. Dr. Malone left, and we need somebody that was going to be stable and work within the district. That was Mrs. Ponce. At this point, with the lack of progress that we've been making, as well as the situations that we have going on, relative to organizations, with the structures, and the like, we need somebody from outside of the city to come in, because there's too many hands in this pot, making it difficult for a superintendent to do what she needs to do. And this superintendent has faced that over the past several years. So I do believe that we need to have somebody from outside this district. And to the mayor's point of me telling another colleague that I wanted to get somebody with experience, absolutely, we need an experienced superintendent. But, Mr. Mayor, you told that same person that you want to try to force somebody in that works for the current school district.
Who did I tell that to?
You told that to other school committee members, and you've been trying to advocate for one particular individual to get the job. So don't be trying to give me some lines of, "Well, he told one member of the committee," when you're not willing to take it on your own.
I will take it on my own. But, Mr. Aguirre, again, that's how you operate in the shadows. My point is, we don't close the door to anybody. We get the best candidate for the city of Fall River. I don't care where they're from. You vote, you obviously have always been an independent voice. You vote whatever way you want. My position is, we go forward with the best candidate for the city of Fall River.
And I have a lot of concerns about where we're at currently. Apparently, you don't, if you want to just continue with the status quo and put people forward. But don't start coming at me, trying to say that I said something, when you don't want to own your own comments and your own actions, sir.
I'm on my own comments.
Own your own comments and own your own actions, before you start accusing me of something.
I didn't accuse you of anything.
Oh, yes, you did.
I echoed what you said. No, I echoed what you said. If you're uncomfortable with your own words, don't be.
Well, I'm not uncomfortable, my words are all.
No, you said you wanted an external candidate, and I respect that. My point is, we get the best candidate for the city of Fall River.
And I said we need an external person, and we need somebody with experience as a superintendent. That's what we need.
We have a motion, second?
No, I guess we don't, we can't.
Somebody, does your hand up? Mr. Corey?
As a counterpoint to that argument, Mr. Chairman, I know that the people that work within this district have been committed to this district for a number of years, and understand the social and emotional needs of our school district inherently. I think there's something to be said about long-term commitment, and I'll use our superintendent as an example, who gave her entire career to the Fall River Public Schools, and had no prior commitment as superintendent, but uses all of those years as a wealth of experience in creating the logic behind all the choices and decisions that a superintendent has to make. So in that regard, I have the highest regard for Superintendent Pott, because she took on a battled district at that time, and she helped stabilize it mightily. I have the ultimate regard for her. So if we have to choose somebody as next superintendent, I agree that it's going to be for the benefit of our schools here in Fall River. Doesn't necessarily have to be some outside choice or inside choice, but the best choice. With that, I yield.
Ms. Pereira?
Yeah, I just think that, I understand where my colleague is coming from, I guess. But I think we have a process here that seems like it's going to be a pretty good and thorough one. So why don't we let the process play out? I think going in saying, "Well, we need somebody from the outside," or "We need somebody from the inside," is ridiculous. What we need is the best candidate. What if we don't have good external candidates, and we have an internal candidate that may be better? I don't know. I mean, I think it's just a process that we have to play out, and I think that that's fair. I, the mayor certainly didn't talk to me about any of this, except to say that we're going to use this very fair and transparent process. So I think it's important that, as committee members, we're up here sort of with an open mind to the candidates that are coming before us. Because if I'm sitting here saying, "I want somebody, you know, who works for our school district," well, that already makes it look a little weird when I'm in a process of hiring somebody without even seeing who they are yet, right? So I think we just kind of have to be careful of, I understand where you're coming from, but I think we have to be careful on how we're handling this. And I'm sure, because the process seems thorough, and they're not just going to give us one person a look at, that we will have external candidates. So at that time, we'll take a look, and we will absolutely hire the person with the most experience and the most qualifications. I mean, I think that's, I would think that's what we're all looking for. But with that, I yield.
Okay, I hope so. Ms. Roderick?
Can I just ask a question about the process? So Phase One says, "Leadership Profile Development," right? So identify success factors, major issues, expectations. That's bolded, so that's a piece that we do, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so when do we sit down? I'm getting, they'll use the mic.
Well, MSAC will contact us all. They have, they have forms and formats that they want us to put down our issues in, and then they'll collate everything and get back to us on what the committee's looking for.
So everybody does that individually?
Correct.
Not in a broader meeting? Okay. And then we develop the job, they develop the job description based on that? Okay, and then they come back to us and approve the leader, we approve the leadership profile?
Correct.
Correct, okay. And then, who do the focus groups? Who's included?
The MASC will probably work closely with the outgoing superintendent to talk to her, and maybe people in the district, to see who would be good on focus groups. They'll report to the school committee. It goes right in order as it says there.
Okay.
Ms. Roderick?
Again, I'm asking those questions, because I haven't done this before. And so if we're talking about, you know, how do we set this up, and who's, what are the parameters? Then I think if we have specific things in mind, like somebody who's maybe been the superintendent of a large urban district, right? Like, I'm just throwing out random things here. But if we're looking, and that's what we put in our expectation list? Okay. So I yield for now.
Mr. Aguirre?
Is there a requirement on screening, or is that, could the MASC just do that themselves?
I think they do that themselves initially.
Yeah, it looks like it.
Then they bring the candidates to us.
So we don't, there's not an obligation to have a screening committee? They would just bring them to us, and we'd interview everybody? Is that your impression?
I can't understand you.
Yeah, it's hard to hear.
Would there be a screening committee, or would the MASC narrow it down for several candidates for us to interview ourselves?
I think there's a screening committee made up of people in the district, maybe one or two people from the school committee, and then they select the finalists that go forward to us. That's how it worked last time.
But are you saying that MASC is going to follow up with that after this vote, is what you're saying?
They're going to start, they're going to probably start at number one and start the phases, go right through everything.
So that'll be food for thought in the future.
Yeah, that's.
Not necessarily now.
No, not right now, they're going to go phase.
If we assign them to a contract, we don't know how much, but we're going to maybe have a screening committee, whatever. And I'm totally fine with the MASC screening the candidates down and having us do the interviews, but it just isn't articulated as well as I would like it to be, but I yield.
Anything further? Can I get a motion a second?
There is already.
Motion to approve.
There is one already?
Yep.
Okay, Deb, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.